The Honorable Commission is present. All those having business before the commission shall be heard in their turn. God save the state and the Honorable Commission.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable Commissar, how is everybody?
Very good, thank you.
Alright, any items from the public miscellaneous discussion?
I have one item. What am I going to do if I freeze up, forget that one day? I don't know.
Oh, you got it.
Oh yeah, so you have silence.
Just afraid I'm going to do it.
But you also seem to enjoy doing it.
I do like it.
That was the first thing I ever noticed about him was how much he enjoyed doing it. I'm like, well.
Just like how I enjoyed using that stand when I was the president.
You could have had it back this year, pal.
Don't have the clerk come in at all ever again.
Just handle it. Okay, well, my packet stills about, but we'll see how it looks.
Okay, alright, review and approval of the agenda. I think we do have a second request from Mr. Yonker for another hire that we got after this has been printed.
But there's still.
There's, besides one last week, there's two more?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We'll just add S.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change you're having. Second full-time hire for.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with one amendment adding an additional hire for the 911 Center. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Approval of the meeting minutes from February fourteenth, twenty fourteen.
It'll be good. I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from February fourteenth.
Hey, you missed your shot. We have a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
How are you, Jan? Carries.
Hello, Kim.
Out of breath.
Holy stack of papers.
Yeah, we didn't even eat.
You can always, you can always camera run track. Always.
Well, he didn't even have his tie tied, so he had to take a break. Snooze you out.
Time to wake up.
Alright, so we, um, I believe, I was talking on the senior, but I can't remember. So we have to make a correction to term length to a previous PSD appointment.
Yeah, Scott Curtin got to give me a call. He said that according to the PSD, the terms, their, their terms are six years. So we approved someone, I guess we're doing it for six years. Not our, it's not our rules, it's the PSD's rule, I guess. It's just to make an adjustment to, uh, to a change because we did a three-year term.
Alright, Honorable Commissar, motion.
I made a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Tucker to a six-year terms, they're a three-year term.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the amendment to the term length to Mr. Tucker's PSD appointment from three years to six years. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So Melanie, what we'll need to do is.
Nah. I'm still a man.
Teenage the first time.
I'm going to change it because of term length.
We just need to do another one of those appointments for the PSD board, just correct the term length.
Okay.
Alright, Marshall is not going to be here.
While you're in there, could you just maybe shoot us an email of what the term lengths are? I assume if they're six-year terms, it must be something we do every two years, I would assume. I guess that would be when I don't go in for two more years. And let's let us know who's up next.
Okay.
I can't, I don't know.
There's, yeah, there's more, I mean, Mike's next. Well, we did Mike, now we could probably be.
I've done, I've done.
We hit Charlie.
I've done a bunch of people.
Yeah, you're right.
Did Charlie, did Mike, did Tucker the first time?
So there's three of them, so it's probably every two-year term.
Yeah, I should. So Marshall will be here, do we have his paperwork? Or no?
We do, we do. So Marshall won't be here, he had a conflict and his schedule, so we have two full-time hires in front of us. One is effective February twenty-sixth, and the other is effective March fourth. So I'll entertain that motion to approve these. And they're both for vacant full-time positions.
Starting sixteen. I'll make a motion to approve the two hires for full-time staff. Ms. Yost, effective February twenty-sixth, and Mr. Graven, effective March fourth, at rate of sixteen dollars an hour.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to authorize the 911 Center to hire full-time ETC Tiffany Yost, starting February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at rate of sixteen dollars an hour. And David Graven as an ETC starting March fourth, twenty twenty-four, at sixteen dollars an hour. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Alright. We are way ahead of schedule.
Well, I don't know if that's what Holland's statements will take us to approve minutes and correct the PSD appointment. I mean, it sounds like a five-minute job, really? We've been talking half the time. Is Jason coming over though?
Him and Marshall will both be over at one forty-five.
One, oh.
That's right, we told them they'd come later. How about Alex?
Well, here's the good news, Alex doesn't typically come for these.
That's what I say, Alex.
The good news is Cindy's here, and Cindy's here early, that's, that's a plus. But anyway, we do a road name real quick, knock that out. It's next on the agenda.
Alright, we have before us the approval of a new road name, Heaven Hill Lane.
Sounds like a place I'd want to live.
I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Heaven Hill Lane at that location in the area.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to approve the new road name, Heaven Hill Lane, as presented by our planning commissioner. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's the gist of my meeting. Alright, Extension Office.
How are you all?
Hello. We are good and we greatly appreciate your support in our office.
We did have our yearly meeting.
Yes, and we brought the paperwork for you, so. My boss told me that I need you to sign these.
Okay, oh yeah, I was supposed to come next time. That doesn't surprise me. But I didn't flip on time. That's good of you for me, on top of that.
Nice to meet you in person.
Meet you.
I'm a tolerant person, right?
That's right, much taller. Well, the only bad thing is, it says it's to be signed by the President of the Commission, so should have Sean sign it.
Well, so you sign it as the chair where the stickers are. You were the chair of the Senate Service Committee.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then, then we will send you a copy of that, and then you guys have to vote on it and sign it and send it back to me.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Did you notice I'm not in your committee anymore?
Yes.
I mentioned that you had food. Joel quickly stole it.
No, I'll get them back to me. We just both.
Well, we had to move it to nighttime, so it was just snacks.
And I, and I just went by zoom.
Yeah.
Do it a little bit ahead of time, you could have fought for it.
Constantly remind me, I'm a.
Actually, it was well-tended, everyone was there except for myself and the folks from.
No, you were there, huh?
I was there, I ran the meeting, but I just wasn't there. Alright, you can have the floor, I am happy to see that. Sorry about that, too.
No problem. I think Cindy's okay.
Well, I was out of town all last week in San Diego, so.
Oh, I'm from San Diego.
Well, it's a nice place.
Yes, it's beautiful.
Toured the midway while I was there.
Okay, yep. My dad was retired Navy and was stationed in San Diego.
What an interesting, interesting thing. If you ever guys haven't had a chance to tour an aircraft carrier, I highly recommend it.
Yeah, there was family days when he was in the Navy and we would go out to sea on the aircraft carriers.
Oh yeah, yeah, the other ones there too, but they're actually active. But this one, of course, was commissioned, but it served for like four or five decades.
Yeah.
Five days after World War II, went into commission, and it was still, was still out there in the nineties. Finally got, or maybe, late eighties maybe, but anyway. Sidebar, highly recommended.
Alright, so if you don't mind, I'm going to read so I don't mess up all my words.
You can read it.
And then I will hand you some copies afterwards. So for Sean, who does not know me, my name is Liz, and I'm Cindy's admin assistant. And nice to see you, Bill and Joel, in person. So I recently started a CEOs club, a garden club specifically, so that we could try to launch a community garden that's ADA accessible. So I know you're somewhat familiar with CEOs, since usually the morningside ladies will declare CEOs month in May. So the garden club is a new voluntary, voluntary nonprofit association focused on serving our community by fostering economic sustainability and equality through free educational offerings and supplies surrounding home gardening, environmentally safe practices, and food preservation. In its commitment to provide an inclusive space for all members of the community, the CEOs Garden Club wants to establish a nine eleven memorial universal garden in Berkeley Springs to not only honor our mountaineers directly impacted by the events on September eleventh, but to also serve Morgan County's senior citizens, veterans, those with disabilities and/or special needs, and those of any age who face food insecurities on a daily basis. This garden will provide all local citizens with a universally designed, fully accessible, ADA-compliant community garden. It will contain a nine eleven memorial bench with commemorative plaque, space for demonstration gardens to, to be used for free educational workshops, and ADA-compliant raised garden beds and accessible paths for community members with mobility issues. Signage will be available in braille, and visual alert devices will be placed strategically for the hearing impaired. One of the demonstration gardens maintained by the garden club will be a sensory garden designed specifically for community members with special needs. There will also be a demonstration garden for our 4H clubs and master gardeners. Since we currently do not have an ADA-accessible garden space in Morgan County, it will be a first of its kind, being both scalable and replicable should other counties in the state want to follow this model. Further, this garden will contain access to a food preservation library we will establish, where residents can borrow food preservation equipment such as canners, canning equipment, dehydrators, and vacuum sealers. Safe canning and food preservation practices will be shared through onsite workshops and educational outreach, utilizing science-based WBU extension educational materials. All this will be at no cost to the public. In addition to a food preservation library, a container garden educational project will stem from this site. This project will provide five-gallon containers, seeds, gardening tools, watering cans, et cetera, to town residents who do not have access to a planting space at their residence. Recipients will be teamed up with garden club members and master gardeners to teach them container gardening while also mentoring them throughout the growing season. I've already submitted several grants and am continuing to aggressively apply for grants and seek donations to get this project off the ground and to ensure its long-term success and ultimate sustainability. In 2024, our main goal is to secure a location for the future garden in time for a groundbreaking ceremony on September eleventh, two, uh, two thousand twenty-four. The remainder of the garden building and infrastructure installation would occur in 2025 and beyond. We intend to partner with as many associations and organizations in town as well to aid in the dissemination of education and fresh foods grown in the demonstration gardens to local food banks, after-school and summer school students, and anyone else in need. And this is where you come in. As most of you know, I have been looking for a location which can support this vision. It needs to be a location which can allow the building of a secure perimeter fence in addition to the building of accessible paths and raised beds. I respectfully ask you to consider whether there's any space available at our Extension Office and Pines Opportunity Center complex, or if there is another location in the county that could suit this project. If the Pines Opportunity Center could work, we could beautify the entire complex by strategically placing demonstration and show gardens in addition to a fenced-in community garden. These additional garden installations would not need to be secured and would be managed by volunteers through WBU extension, whereas the memorial garden would need secure to protect the community beds inside. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank you for your time and leave you with one final thought from Frances Hodgins Burnett, the secret garden. At first, people refuse to believe that a strange new thing can be done. Then, they begin to hope if it can be done. Then, they see it can be done. Then, it is done, and all the world wonders why it was not done centuries ago.
I'll tell you what, that was a great job.
Thank you, I'm so nervous.
Well, you shouldn't be because you nailed it.
And I have these copies for you, and there is research on the last page as well.
I'm sorry, my suggestions didn't seem to work out.
Well, it's a flood plain, so.
I just hope. What kind of space do you think you guys want to be named?
Like, do you mean amount of space?
Yeah, well, I'm just looking, I've got the air review of the complex.
I, I printed a picture for you with some outlines of where the gardens could go, but the main community.
That's what I was thinking too, down the road.
Yes, the, the community part, garden part, which would be fenced in, could be right next to the water tower where the master gardener said it already is located.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's about the only spot I see that, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the slope is there, but I know you can deal with some slope, but.
Yes.
Seems like the only spot bringing up, putting any kind of hysteria in it. Except for the spot where our giant buildings will go. Which is back there.
Right.
You know where that's going to go, I guess?
Well, I was guessing that's where.
That's where, right here.
Yeah, I was guessing that's where it's going to go.
So.
EMS.
But yeah, I mean, I don't know if we need to take a look at that, if that are a future agenda, or if we'd be okay just to do it. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know why in the world we wouldn't be able to do it there, but same.
There's a, there's a tank water tank.
Yeah.
Had a piece of.
Yeah, you, you see the picture?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming we would be able to reach out to the water department, figure out where the lines are and how deep they are.
Yes, and there's an electrical line as well.
They gotta go back to the tower, right?
Yeah. I think that's the doubt, but obviously you want to be sure.
Yeah. Does the one, is the, remember the one in the town, is that one not used anymore?
The Town of Bath Community Garden is, well.
Accessibility.
They're getting it back up and running, but it's not accessible and.
Because that's all, I mean, I had, I heard compliments from many people that used that.
Yes.
They are working on getting that back.
They're getting it back.
Problem with it is.
Accessibility.
Yeah. And they're not going to use it for food production, they're going to use it for educational purposes. So we want to be able to have some raised beds that people can rent out, that that's their bed, and then some of the beds would be demonstration gardens where maybe schoolchildren can come on a field trip, they can get educated by someone in the extension, have lunch in the garden.
Could you do, take that area that we're talking about and give us a kind of a.
Footage.
I didn't go far enough, maybe if you had it here, I'd, I'd.
No, I did not, I did not do the area.
If you could give us like some idea what would visually be, I mean, I, I'd like, I mean, I'd get it. You know, like kind of show us on the, on the diagram or something.
Now you're asking to be an artist.
Yeah, that as well.
I think if.
I think he knows what's going to happen.
Timberland matters, I don't, I don't know if you're wanting a couple of different little spots, two, to do different things.
Yeah.
The only two that I would not be in favor of would be the two right out front, in front of Blue Ridge.
Okay.
I, I, that's my.
Yeah, I agree.
They, they rent space and I, I just, I feel like, I mean, they rent the whole building.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't want to touch that.
Mess with that just because I feel like you could, I mean, they may.
So they have an agriculture program.
I mean, unless you're working around something.
They might be happy to let you use it, I don't know, but I would go get.
I'm okay with not stepping on anyone's toes.
But the side piece over there looked like it would be alright, I don't, the back stuff. Is it not, is there no space? Is there nothing good here? Where they have a little picnic table that are people sitting on?
Oh, yes, yes, that could work too.
I mean, I would go bring them their space per se.
Also where they, yeah.
I, I don't know how often they use it to go out there.
They're sitting there.
And it's very shady, but it could have a shade garden in that spot.
Black Jeep. It's every day. Anyway, plus, we do, although the state took a little corner. Oh my goodness, that's already on the map, a little kind of corner that the state took. They took a tiny little corner up, off there, but that whole little ridge that's certainly, it's wooded right now. I mean, it could be, it could be reused eventually, but I mean, you know, it'd probably be some brush taken off. I don't know, I mean, the trees are big. It might all be big.
There's some in there that need padded up, kind of, uh.
Yeah, there's probably, you could get compost and leaves and stuff out of there. It'd help your garden. Start working on a little, it's just like a little ridge, I think.
Yes.
But it would be a, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad spot, probably get sun most of the day.
Where the stop sign is?
From the tower through that woods.
Yes.
I got it.
I drive by that, it's on a slope, part, part of the top of it could work though.
Yeah, maybe part of the top. Maybe it would be the whole piece for sure.
Yeah, no, but potentially some.
But that could actually.
I don't know how thick the woods are.
That could be a good location for a memorial garden where anyone can come and sit in a quiet place. There could be art installations from local artists.
Well, I'm looking for a bathroom to quiet, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big highway.
Yes.
Great, but the size.
That's true.
Pretty soon. Yeah, we maintain most of the trees there past some.
Yeah, it'll still be nice.
It's nice back there anyway, if you just.
So you, do you want to have it come back? Future meeting or?
I mean, I'm okay with that area near the tank, I mean, if you're okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, that seems free, and it seems like the best.
And it's right there, and there's bathrooms inside.
Near your office.
Yes, um, yes, and there's bathroom access for people in our office and.
Well, all those, especially those few personal, all those other circle spots, it's not like we're going to.
We won't be issuing a deed or anything, but we will.
Okay.
But we will certainly give you permission.
Okay, that sounds good.
Landlocked.
Have to draw up a right-of-way agreement, yeah, not worth it.
Not to mention, I don't think we're allowed to own anything, so.
Yeah.
It's got to be your property.
Good, it'll be our, it'll be our fruits and veggies.
It will, yes.
Yeah, we will totally welcome until all the vegetables are grown. Get out, we're supposed to do this, get out here.
Take all our fruit.
Yeah.
And I, there's, there's additional matters, I loved it, we, we, we usually plant a garden every year. We have in the past couple of years, having a baby and doing it, with three other kids, it's been tough, but we always grow our own food, and it is amazing the, what you can teach to your children about that, and they appreciate where things come from, I love everything a garden stands for, plus is.
There's just so many opportunities.
It took me about ten years to learn how to grow a watermelon, but believe me, whenever I finally did, I wound up having fifteen, ten-plus pound watermelons, and I had no idea what I was going to do with it. But every other year before that, I would grow them, and they would get to this big and stop.
I think you're supposed to eat them.
Well, I couldn't when they were that big, because I, trust me, I was so proud of my little watermelon.
Or you can get a big bag of rubber bands, put it around the middle.
We had the kids do one at a time.
We had enough extra watermelon, so we did do that, until one blows up, that's pretty fun.
I've had a garden every year.
Did it work with the rubber bands?
Oh, yeah, it'll work eventually.
I've had a garden every year since I was six, and it just helps me understand the play of the farm. It really, it really is nuts.
I tried a garden a couple of times, one was a raised bed. I can go.
We have master gardeners that can help you.
Part of the market, possibly is, if I can.
Yes, they appreciate that.
There's just no way. Anyway, well, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the space up there that she's outlined, minus the two in the front. And I mean, obviously, if there are any issues or if you have any problems, just, just let us know. Do it, but I, I mean, I think we should go ahead and go record that we better use the space.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
I didn't make it in.
No, we have a motion on the floor to authorize the Extension Office to use the space designated next to the water tank. Is there any further question or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, so you can probably say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
See, we're not such bad guys.
So when I told her, she's like, I'm really nervous, I'm like, you don't mind, just tell them what you need to do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, have a great day.
Yes, have you.
Well, there, um, I mean, you got a little, there's no, there's nothing really to discuss yet. I don't know, I mean, we, it was a carryover on the agenda, but as you saw in it, I assume I copied you on an email.
I saw an email.
Uh, we still have that to, to deal with with region nine part. I mean, we're, they're okay, we did have a meeting, let me talk, let me just update, are we at that point in the agenda?
Wow, that's next.
Okay, um, well, we had a meeting here with Steve Elko, Stephen Elko and Chuck Marsh, and they totally, you know, they want us to be the lead, obviously. And I would prefer to have regional, the regional council be part of it and, and help us with the management of it, get it going. But there has to be an agreement between, and, and, and they're going to go ahead and work on, work on the scope while we're trying to get the agreement together. Basically, they're, they have a good handle on what the scope is, what they want, what we'd like to have in it. We're going to have to do some reaching out because twenty percent of it's in Virginia, the watershed. And so there really wasn't anything for us to discuss today, and they both had colds and flus, so didn't want them in here. So, did you have a?
What, man?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Frank Rogers, I'm Director of Kukabin Institute headquartered in Great Kukabin. We've been sampling the Sleepy Creek since twenty fourteen, along with the Watershed Association Conservation District. So I saw the NRCS Sleepy Creek on the agenda, I thought I'd come, and then I heard folks were sick. And so I find myself not quite understanding what's going on. So I just thought I, what I can do is speak out and support that what Sleepy Creek and Warm Springs have done to bring these NRCS resources to, to town is just fabulous. And I, I would urge accounting to, to consider taking it on yourself, because we're the downstream end of Sleepy Creek. And as I said, we've been sam, the institute, we're a certified West Virginia Water Quality Lab, and we've been search, sampling for more than ten years. Sleepy Creek is worse at the Virginia line than it is at the Potomac.
We are taking it on, we're just going to use their manage, their financial management for the grant.
That's fantastic.
Their guidance.
That's fantastic, because this is what, this is what Sleepy Creek really needs, is a national organization to come in that can cross the state line and start looking a bit at what the water quality issues are upstream from Morgan County, and why is it we're getting excessive amounts of fecal coliform coming down to us from Virginia.
Well, we, I know we mentioned that when we were in here, of course, this is Sleepy Creek watershed. It's a lot of it's in Morgan County, obviously, but it definitely starts in Virginia. We mentioned, I know somebody talked about that, how, and they, they talked about how they might work with other groups. And I would assume a national organization like that would be able to do something in that regard, but do we test it at the line?
We do, exactly, at Morgan Road, just on, just on the Virginia side, but essentially at, at the state line. At Morgan Road, where Sleepy Creek crosses the little bridge down by, uh, walking at midnight.
And you, yeah, I know, just Potomac, and you're saying it's worse there than the Potomac?
Oh, that's correct, we don't even bother to sample down at River Road by the Potomac anymore because the river's so clean, you can't find any fecal coliform in it. It reaches the middle of the county where it stays, depending on the, uh, the weather and the season. I, I can say consistently, it is worse at the Virginia line than anywhere else or equivalent to the worst. And then it kind of goes through the middle of the county, um, might go up or down a little bit depending on the season and what farmers might have done, or the sewage treatment plant that don't waste in recently. But then by the time it gets down by Eckert Lane and down there where you get into Deep Valley, where it's really the Sleepy Creek going down through the woods, it cleans itself all up, so by the time it reaches the Sleepy Creek campground. It reaches the Sleepy Creek campground, practically drink it.
The, uh, I mean, I always think about when these groups come in and we talk about, I always think mostly about flooding.
Well, that's, that's part of it.
It's not certainly not just about flooding.
And that's what we gotta make sure is the scope of work. It, it has everything that we want, because there's plenty, should be able to get plenty out of it, uh, with, with the amount of funding they have. We should be able to get, get whatever we want, and so, uh, the idea is to create the scope of work. Get, uh, you know, do RFQ for, uh, consultant services to, to do everything we want, and. That's, that's, and obviously use the Sleepy Creek folks for their, uh, their guide, they're basically gonna guide that part of it, we're just gonna. Collect, you know, do the.
Yeah, Chuck Marsh and their crew does a great job, as does the Warm Springs, they're very.
I didn't realize you were doing the testing, that's great that you do that. I knew that that would happen, and I knew that we got that impaired, it's an impaired stream.
And it remains impaired. Last year, I can't figure it out, but it was particularly bad. Maybe it was just the drought conditions or something, I can't figure it out.
Also, with our extension on five twenty-two, we will be removing a, well, potentially. We're, we're gonna put a line out there that could potentially remove a.
Package plant and the lagoon.
Yeah, package plant and a lagoon that goes into that watershed. So I don't know where it connects or eventually gets to the watershed, but, you know, cer- certainly impactful getting that out, and it would go to the Warm Spring room, or Warm Spring.
That, that's fantastic.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, that was one of our selling points for the getting this money, but EDA didn't care about that, they cared about the economic effect, but that's what we got to plan, but. The, um, no, I think we're on the right track of that, appreciate the comments and especially.
That's great, I saw it on the agenda, so I thought I'd, uh, show up, and then when I heard that the folks at Sleepy Creek weren't gonna be able to make it, I thought I.
Well, we, we had it on there from last meeting, it was a carryover, and I was hoping that we could get, uh, the agreement to a point where we'd be signing it, but it'll be another meeting at least. The agreement with MCRS or.
And, and Region Nine.
And, well, Region Nine is gonna give us whatever the amount is we need to put in the grant, that kind of thing for, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, we're gonna be still the ones signing the agreement, it's just that they wanted it for the monetary part, the, uh, MCRS does, Christie.
That one is, that's great.
And we haven't worked that out, so that's where we are. And I know the other guys wanna get going, but they all, but they have the script of work they can work on.
That's good, I just thought I'd show up.
No, great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Look at these two guys back here. Got the good guy and the bad guy, one's a white and one's a blind. What, you guys will play good cop, bad cop on us?
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. We don't have to guess, we don't have to guess who's to go where. Yep.
Well, thank you guys for joining us. We skipped you, but we knew you were coming a little later. It's actually worked out real good.
Yeah.
It's good.
We go back up to them then?
Yes.
You guys have a floor.
Okay, uh. I guess the reason for us being here is there's been some, I guess, emergence, emerging technologies, uh, over the last, uh, couple of years. Unfortunately, they just kind of came to the front over the last year. Uh, we entered into, well, I should say, I entered into a contract with Everbridge, which is our current mass notification vendor. Uh, it was a three-year contract I entered into last year at the, uh. Advice of previous administration, I'll say, just so we didn't have to enter into a contract every year. With that being said, the. I, I was unaware of the commission's, I guess, responsibility and the rules that govern the commission as far as. Uh, entering into a contract that would, uh, overlap, uh, possibly overlap administrations as far as the commission would go. Uh, it's my understanding that contracts can't extend past, uh. I guess, the, uh, elections.
Yeah, we can't.
Okay, that's the general rule, but it happens all the time.
I, 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 I understand that it happens.
Or multi-year contracted firms, or multi-year contracted copies, or multi-year contracts, all kinds of others.
But most of those vendors, most of those vendors understand that within West Virginia State Code, a county commission can back out of a contract, no questions asked.
All right, what, what I would like to do is back out of our contract with Everbridge, but I would need you guys to do that. So we could, it doesn't have to be bid, but we could re-quote it, uh, that would produce, uh, a possible cost savings. To the county taxpayers as well as, uh, maybe an increase in, uh. The capabilities of our system. If, if you follow what I'm saying, gentlemen.
I follow you, but do you happen to have any details about that original contract or does that sort of came from over?
I have, I have the contract here, if you guys want to see it with the Master Services Agreement. The only thing that it neglects, it's governed under Massachusetts law, which I don't think would be applicable in West Virginia. Uh, and, you know, I, I, I don't know how that works with, I mean, because I, I do understand that state code allows us to, uh.
Are we having issues, or we're, like, something's not working, or we?
Uh, it, it's not necessarily, uh, the working issues, uh, some of the capabilities that are out there now, uh. Allow for some integration into our CAD system. Uh, and, yeah, a little more user-friendly, uh, systems. Uh, something that we could possibly bridge the gap between nine-one-one and OES and allow some, uh, quicker. Notification of, of the public.
Do we, do you know if the company that we're currently in contract with has the capabilities to do that stuff? Or is it be something that would, I mean, that's just.
No, they do not.
So basically, they wouldn't, you'd be able to?
Uh, we would certainly entertain a quote, uh, the, the, the request or the bid that, or, I should say, the, uh. The information that we would send out, uh, would kind of spell out what we're looking for. Uh, and they would absolutely be able to quote, uh, to bid, we'll say, but on the, on the new product. Uh, they would just have to list what their deficiencies would be.
Well, we have no expert in contracts, so I don't know how I can say, yeah, let's just do that. Um, I mean, has anybody tried to reach out to them just to say, hey?
I, I did reach out to them, and they basically said, it is what it is, but if you can provide me language that says that you guys can, you know. Back out of this contract, then, you know.
Well, there's always a silver lining, and reading this contract, it looks like we can only terminate if there's a breach, material breach, there's not. They suspend our service, which they haven't, or we just don't pay them for thirty days. So, the easy answer is, just don't pay. If you wanted, if you wanted a non-legal opinion, that would be.
It sounds really non-legal.
That's my. Well, their termination clause is only five point one, five point two, and five point three.
But you can probably sense on that part. Do we know how we pay? Do we just pay a run-up sum for year one?
Yes.
And year one will be up in June, it looks like.
Five point four, yes.
So.
So you can, here's what I would do in a situation like this, whether you want to do it, it's fine. In my situation in the past, negotiating these contracts, you can do two things, you can play good cop and just tell them, hey. Per West Virginia State Code, send them that section of the code that does not bind county commissions into contracts longer, because we cannot end that a future county commission. And then say, hey, if you want, you know, the nice thing to do is allow us out of your contract, and you can keep the cancellation clause for not payment in your back pocket.
Well, is their contract, is that pretty clear? It's a, that's a part of cancellation clause over their side, but.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's the only way we could, in my quick interpretation of this, that's the only way we could get out of this, is if we don't pay them.
Okay, is the, um. Yeah, the, the language for, uh, I guess, the commission, the non-binding over the election cycle. Uh, would that, do you, in your opinion, would that protect us from that future liability?
That'd be a question for Mr. James or Mr. Dick Gaddick to answer, but I do. I don't want to give you my legal opinion, because I'm not an attorney.
Well, nor, nor, nor about.
I do have contracts enough to say that. I guess when we signed the contract. Last year, Phil did, no, Bill, that we would have been, so I would feel like we would almost be binding. Until twenty twenty-five, if that would be the case.
Well, I don't think, the one thing you're, you're, that you're talking about, though, doesn't, the rule, the law said, you can't buy a future commission, but West Virginia ninety-six form doesn't talk about future commissions. It said basically, the state, by states, state board or commission, reserves right to terminate this contract for thirty days or a notice to the vendor. Problem is, that's a form that gets signed, and. We are the ones that have the vendor sign it, and I would be willing to bet you didn't talk to that. No way we got to sign a West Virginia ninety-six form. Should, but we didn't. Yes, that's what we should sign with anybody, so that's, that's what becomes, remember, Ken, Ken brought this up, that's when it becomes a problem. Because if you were gonna make a vendor sign that, or a bank or whoever, like if you're leasing something, the leasing company, they don't want, they're not gonna sign it. They're saying, well, screw you guys, we're not, we're not signing that, we're not gonna, we're not gonna find insurance, whatever, because we're not taking J through, we're paying us. So they will sign it, and then that's how, like, my company only has, we literally have one bank that we finance municipalities, commissions, boards of education in West Virginia. Because of the West Virginia ninety-six form. Problem is, we are almost guaranteed not having them sign the West Virginia ninety-six form. So we don't have that protection. Now, what you're talking about is maybe different, but, but that's what it was, that, I really just think the good cop way is gonna be the best in this situation.
Yeah, I think we'll give it a shot.
Guys, you know, this is what we need to do now, we need to work with the CAD system, you know, this, this contract didn't do it, um, we're gonna put out a, whatever we're gonna do, an RP or just a quote, or, you know, a. Spex that we want people to bid on, I assume it would be that, because.
Yeah, it's gonna be under the.
And, and feel free, by all means, feel free to do it again, but we just want to give you. Ninety days written notice, for instance, that we're not, we're not, we're not sending, we're not, we're not going next year. They're not gonna get a check from us.
Okay.
And if you want us to look that over, have Dan look it over, or, you can have Dick look it over, we need to, but we might reserve him for later, although he, although what he'd tell us, if we ask him. Of course, if we ask you, okay, too long, I'm obviously gonna pay. Was that?
Should our assistant prosecutor start again?
I don't think so, huh?
He was here yesterday, I just happened to be, I passed him.
The new one?
Yes.
He's picking up something, of course, I'll be answering. What is it, do you know what the start date is?
I thought he already started, but I don't know.
He was picking up his employment back then, that's all I, because I was doing this thing.
Well, maybe I'll walk up, yeah, I'll say, maybe we can do.
It's gonna be his first product.
Yeah, we think he can do this.
I guess, I guess the thing is, uh, Jim will back me with that commission clause, uh, as far as trying to back out of the contract.
Yeah, just keep it in your back pocket, and if we need it, we'll, we'll have, hopefully, our new assistant prosecuting attorney take a look at it, see if we have any legal out.
Okay, that's part of our deal.
But I would always.
You had to let him help us a little bit.
I would always, I always refrain from using anything legal first. If they want to be jerks, then yeah, we'll have to talk to an attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at the quality of the product and the, uh, the speed of getting it out to.
He starts March fourth.
Public as well as, uh, the cost savings to the taxpayer.
Good. So on March fourth, we need to bombard him with this. First, hopefully he'll look after it, like, oh, this is a piece of cake. So.
Okay, that's what I'll do. All right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, that's it.
Did you already do that? No, did I? No, you're good.
Yeah, right here.
You spelled my name wrong, I won't look against you at the top.
Sorry. I'll fix it, it's on the, the saved template, right?
I know, it's been like, it's been like that forever.
CJ, not you?
It's been like that forever, but finally, this meeting, I, I put along, do it, and corrected it.
I'll, I'll fix it on my template.
It's fine, really, it is. All right, guys, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
That's all right.
Move that out.
So, well, I think, I really liked your email about the deer murders. I laughed about that one. So the sheriff's department doesn't have any extra vehicles due to deer murders. Deer strikes. Uh. I, I, I mean, I'm kind of lost with where we go from here.
Well, I mean, I guess we could look at some logs and see just how often these vehicles are being used, we all, they all have logs. I mean, that'd be one thing, I don't want to be, I don't want to be.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I just don't, I mean, again, we're not always in those positions, but some of the vehicles, there's no way all of them can be run if something's not. And if it isn't, you know, sitting is not good for a vehicle, even, there is a van, Eric.
Well, see, I wasn't here, I mean, I was on the phone, but I didn't hear anything, so he was on the, when he was talking, I obviously couldn't hear the other side of that conversation, but, so my question becomes, who knows the answer? What, what do they use, what do they use a black vehicle for?
The tonneau?
Yeah. No, the other one.
The Jeep, the Jeep, uh, color.
What is that new vehicle?
It's a van.
They have a van, we bought it. A van is for.
I mean, I assume we bought it out of their.
Transporting people, which rarely gets used as well, but it's newer, and it, the point of it was to transport people. We have an employee who picks people up to take them through the program.
Right, that's Dale, and Dale doesn't use the new vehicle, Dale uses the other vehicle.
And what are we using the new vehicle for? Color.
No.
They have two vehicles, one gets used.
So is one brand new?
The van has a.
That's the whole point of buying a vehicle, that's the whole point.
Just ask if Dale uses the van.
Let me ask her. She scared you.
Dave Ford, this Stephanie.
Hey, Stephanie. It's Joel. I, we're in a meeting, and we're, we're talking still about trying to find a vehicle to use for the, um, health park folks. So you were talking about that black Jeep, Sean said that when he talked to you last week, that you guys said you use it all the time, but I couldn't figure out why, because I wasn't here, I was, I was in San Diego, and I was listening in, so I wasn't following. So my question is, didn't we get a van for, to use up there for picking people up, and does Dale use the van? Okay, but here's the thing, so here's the thing, so you're telling me that Dale uses the van every day except for bad weather? I know, but the van, it's why we bought the van, was for him to use it, like, did you, I wouldn't, besides that, are you guys open when we close the warehouse? Well, if you're not open when we close the warehouse, then I wouldn't think that Dale's ever out there driving in bad weather. I mean, it can't be that bad when we close the warehouse. Okay, well, do you use the, do you use it for any reason? No, the other, give the hell. Do you or your staff ever need it for anything? Because I mean, you also, could also use that, uh, what kind of van do we even buy? Is it like a nice mini-van, or is it transit? Sounds like a nice, small, or not like a big giant cargo van or something.
Like a little, it's like a dark thing. So we just need to work more on this, I don't see what he said what we have, I mean, we talked to the.
Oh, well, I, I get it. I think you'd be better, I, I think you, okay, I get you, I get you. I got you. Joel. No, I get it, that's cool. All right, I have the information I need now, thank you so much. We have a van, it's a transit, a transit, I think I know what that is, it's a kind of a smaller van.
Yeah, they're cool.
She said it's kind of hard for the driver to get in and out of it, because it sets lower, which I would think would make it easier, but maybe it sets too low, but I would make a van be too low, anyway.
It's not gonna send me lower than that little Jeep.
The first answer was, they, they can use the van except for when the weather's bad. Then I was like, well, are you closed or open? We're closed, and she's saying we're closed, so I don't think that anyone's ever using it when the weather's bad, so I, I think they can use it.
Is maybe told to use it?
Well, it's.
Complicated.
More than I would prefer, say, at this time.
You should, Ken. Well, we need to do a little work on this subject and.
Well, we need to do a little work on this subject and again.
I think the work is almost done, but, but March the sixth is our next meeting. I'm pretty certain. I'm pretty certain we will have the answer then.
All right, prolong it. This will be the longest agenda item since I've been.
It's totally fine.
Trying to break any records. We're trying to get anything.
Yeah, it's, it'll be good. We will have it situated. It'll be a, it'll only be a five-minute.
It'll be an open shop case.
Five-minute item.
Five-minute items, okay.
And it can be at the end after all the electors do their things, because we don't want anybody to sit here longer than you.
And when the agenda item starts, it should be five minutes after the meeting opens.
Well, it depends. Depends on what's on there.
Okay.
That, that is a floating start. So, so like today, these things, I mean, if, if I was looking at it closely, which obviously I did not, or I would have told you.
Thank you.
Today would have said, I would have said, oh, well, we're taking, we can never know if items from the plumber come or not, but almost always they're not. And then the agenda takes a minute. And then proving meeting minutes takes a minute. And then correction, return, length of things, a minute. So to me, that's three minutes. I was harder than it.
One oh-five.
One oh-five. But there's plenty of other times. We have stackings on rations or who knows what could be up there. That we could make fifteen.
I get what you're saying.
No, we're ahead, but we almost, we almost got too far ahead. We were lucky today because these guys came early. Now, I, I wouldn't come and sit in a whole meeting, but, but I guess our, our thing used to always say, within fifteen minutes of your time slot, you better be here. Because we might be early. But today, we grew about twenty, thirty minutes early, but it's all good. I don't know if you're early.
You're late then. You get to say your verse.
Which one?
Sunday.
Oh.
Sunday, yes.
All right, I will entertain a motion to, uh, end border equalization.
I make a motion to.
There it goes.
To, uh. Put a halt to border equalization for fiscal year twenty-four.
Seen maybe. All right, we have a motion on the floor to put a halt to border equalization for twenty-twenty-four. Seen maybe. Is there any further questions or discussions? Eric Nunnell's favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Seen maybe.
Aye. I just care. Phil, you have to say.
I'm not saying it. Can't say it.
It's Latin, Bill.
Seen a day.
Seen a day.
I seen a day, you didn't.
Okay, so everybody's happy now.
All right. Administrators report, how was your training?
Training, training was good. How did I go?
Uh, no, I double booked myself. I didn't remember until last night.
I think we did the one o'clock meeting.
I thought you really wanted to do that.
I did, but I got to it.
And we could have stopped at eight somewhere.
And then.
Well, I, I.
We have not ate today.
You should go just R and B for you. I, 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 I remember that. I would say.
Yeah, so I got a text message last night that said, remember, this is tomorrow. And I said, I didn't have it in my calendar, but I already have four other things on there for this morning. So I double booked myself, so my apologies. I have went to it before and I'm sure it was the same exact thing as the last time, probably.
The only thing different was the guy that came to speak.
JB came this time.
And he was giving his opinions on the, of the, how we use that.
Right. You also consider like.
Do you like to share your opinions? I'd like to hear them.
The CDs.
Yeah.
Was a good idea.
Yeah. He was also, he, he was saying that there's three counties that are in another area. I forget which ones he said.
It's around Putnam County.
Yeah, he said there was three counties in that area that decided to put their funds together instead of focusing on the.
That's not gonna happen the next.
Yeah, well, I was just telling you what he said.
The CD option or money market account, I like.
Yeah.
The CDs are like six point, six and a half percent, he said now.
Well, I think what he's saying is just like the water sewer money, you got ahead of time. You can take it, put it in a fund. You still have to spend it according to the rules. But you can take it.
But you can make, you can make a little more.
He was just saying that we should, we should, we should use the money for more of preventative to make drugs not an issue of the future. Not that that'll not be an issue of the future, but instead use it for that versus.
Like he used like a five-year-old. Like, well, that's where we should start because those, those are the kids that are just learning.
I totally respect what he said. I totally understand what they're saying. But I will re-point out that seventy-five percent of the funds are sitting in a pot at the state level that's being overseen by eleven-person board, two of which are in the Eastern panel. That money is for any group, nonprofit, for-profit, whatever, that would want to apply to do it for these types of things. I have been told by members of that eleven-person panel that the money for the counties should be used for damages.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's what we.
Damages you had in the past, which we can use up to half or to lawyer, and damages you have still to occur, which are future jail bills, future running our day report center, which the day report center is one of those things that we love to do certain things. And we will use it for that. But, I mean, I know it seems like a lot, but the vast majority of the money is in a pot where people that are gonna do those programs, they're the only people that can get it. We can't apply to that for seventy-five percent. Say, hey, we need this for our jail bill.
In our lawsuit, there is a percentage that we are allowed to use for this purpose.
Absolutely.
And that's what.
That's what Steve's gonna tell us.
Everybody's calling a front page investment or that.
Is it?
Yeah.
And they, they said not to use it for the jail bill.
That's what they said.
Not to. Because really, the state should be paying for their own jail bill.
For the jail pay bill. We're gonna pay ourselves back for past jail bills and then it's county funds. That's the exact way it is.
Yeah, well, or, or we can use it for pay ourselves back for past county, uh, for money put into day reports.
Twelve years.
I get it. They're gonna, the, the state level folks are gonna tell us all day long what they would like us to use it for. But you can use it for whatever's on that sheet.
Yeah.
There's like a category A, and a category B, and a category C or something like that. They want you to do it in A, but.
There was a risk in a lawsuit, in a lawsuit. There was a risk. I mean, some risks.
Anyway, we, we will have to have a probably somewhat lengthy discussion about it at some point, uh, what we actually wanna do with it. Now, certainly we could put it in a CDs one. I, you know, I hate that we even have to ask for that. Like, when we get new money and we put it into somewhere, isn't it already, like, I would think it would already be set up to be interest-bearing.
The banks.
Well, it was, wasn't it? It was interest-bearing, it was.
Maybe. We'll, we're about to, I won't find out. Sometimes we'll find out.
It was. That was, because that was in the letters.
I was gonna say, it was in, it was in the letters that they said today, but you guys had asked me to ask Elizabeth at, at SCMB if it was, but I never got a response on that, actually.
Well, you, you need to find that out if you can. Find out like that particular account, because this is a separate account. God knows we have like eight or ten of them down there now. But that particular one, it should be in a very similar interest-bearing account like that water sewer account is. It should be getting mon- monthly on what's sitting in there because, well, that's the only fair thing to the taxpayers. Honestly. We do have some funds that are restricted from being in interest-bearing, which I have no idea why. I don't know why they'd ever restrict a fund. Anybody that's giving you money, why they'd ever say you can't put it in.
That was the meeting that we're at was where they're here, here, why.
But anyway, that was.
What is that gentleman's name that runs that meeting? I forgot his name.
JB McCusky.
No, the other one.
The fellow. Aura?
Aura, Aura.
Aura was not there today.
He wasn't. No.
Probably been post-retired.
All right.
He's already retired.
Did he?
Yeah, he's up. But he still works. He's been retired for years.
Part-time, I mean.
I'll contend, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. If we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda, is there any further questions or discussion? Eric Nunnell's favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
We're on the other edge.
Anything else for the, go to the group? We are adjourned.
Man, we're careful.
So, do you all have any?